Ready and I should know by Monday. Counselor Bay. Right, James, do we see Counselor Bay?
I don't.
Okay, so we'll move on until he comes on. We're gonna go to Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items. Start with items fourteen fifteen, which are the public hearing for the school district budget, which will be held on May fifth, so we're gonna be advertising that. And then items sixteen and seventeen are general ordinance revisions which waive fees for the upcoming year. So actually, I'll have that get explained just for anyone that's not part of the Finance Committee. So I guess Jen would probably be the right person to.
Yeah, happy to, Counselor Green, thank you. This is Jen Tipton with Neighborhood and Business Development. So these items are really to help elements of our small business community recover, continue their recovery during the pandemic. So one of the items is really focused on bars and restaurants who, you know, it's as all of you know, I think, have been really hard hit during the pandemic because of all of the state imposed closures that have basically rendered them inoperable for large portions of the last year. And even now, they have restrictions on how they can operate. So this would basically waive the fees for certificates of use, which those businesses have to renew every two years. And we have it going retroactive to the start of the pandemic, since obviously, they've had to pay those fees despite, in many cases, not being able to operate. And so we have basically a two-year period because the certificates of use are required every two years from March of 2020 through March of 2022, when those fees would be waived. So we're basically waiving the fees for one cycle. They still have to apply for the renewals and be subject to inspection. So all of those health and safety provisions are still in place. They would just have the fee waived. And then the other item is waiving the fees associated with entertainment licenses. This is really for about thirty of our businesses that operate entertainment venues. So a live stage for live performance, and that includes restaurants that have small stages as well. Again, those performances have been completely banned by the state for the last year, and they'll probably be able to start back up again, you know, in 2021. But the waiver of the fee is really just an acknowledgement that they haven't been able to operate or get revenue from performances for the last year. Happy to answer questions.
Jen, did we ever check on the DPW and their cafe permits? I think it'd be a nice idea if they did the same thing for.
Yep, yeah, we're discussing that internally with DPW, and that would have to go, you know, through the Public Works Committee. So we didn't have a letter submitted by the last due date, but we are working on that for the next round of meetings.
Thanks, Jen.
Just for clarification, Jen, when you say that is going to be retroactive, does that mean that we are going to also refund back those that paid when they shouldn't have paid?
It does, yes. So we would refund about $62,000 in fees that had been paid since last March, and we are estimating it's gonna be about another $40,000 between now and this time next year. So all told, it's about $100,000 in city revenue.
Thank you.
Sure.
And if Counselor Green doesn't mind, I'd just like to, you know, in the committee meeting, I spoke very strongly in support of this. I'd just like to raise my voice in support and advocacy for this again. As someone who, you know, my other job keeps me in restaurants and bars and entertainment venues all the time, and they have been tremendously hard hit during COVID. And had the federal aid not come through, I think, you know, maybe this would be a more difficult conversation to have. But I think making some small effort to show them that, you know, we're supporting them throughout this rough two years, I think, is something I strongly advocate for. So just wanna let my fellow counselors know how deeply I support this effort going forward.
Any other questions on these items? Okay, thank you. So the remaining items for finance are eighteen through twenty, and they're all legal matters, which we do have a executive session scheduled for today after this year. So we can discuss it at that time, and so those are my items.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to Counselor Bay.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving at a snail's pace over here. We have items number nine through thirteen. Item number nine is the CDBG application for which we should be all set. I'm not sure if there's any questions or concerns that my colleagues have. I believe we've discussed this quite a bit. Item number ten is relative to SIDA's lead agency for Seeker. This item passed our committee agenda, but in the event that there's any questions, is anyone available? Slimandola, anyone for to provide a short explanation?
Good afternoon, Counselors. Eric Gannus stepping in for Judy Delaney on behalf of SIDA. But correct, Counselor Bay, so this is a request that SIDA would be serving as lead agency. And this is a project renovation of 444 East Genesee Street. It is going to incorporate twenty-four units of affordable housing in downtown. It will add commercial space as well in the downtown area for a retail storefront. And the project is currently making its way through the necessary zoning and regular permit reviews as well. But this is specifically the legislation at hand is regarding the lead agency for SIDA to move forward with this project.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions from any of our colleagues? All right, item number eleven. This is the sale of the title on interest, an abandonment of portions of the 1,000 block of Clinton. This is for the JMA project. Eric, are you taking that as well, or someone else?
Typically, Commissioner Clifford. I just wanna confirm he is.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, this is the sale of the two portions of streets, the 1,000 block of South Clinton Street and the 100 block of Cortland Avenue that were abandoned by the council last year. These two streets are gonna be made part of the campus of the JMA project. We had the properties appraised. The appraisal came in at 300,000, so the amount is 300,000 plus the appraisal fee. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions going once, going twice. Thank you, Commissioner. And now we have twelve and thirteen are special permits. These two passed our committee. Are there any questions that anyone has for zoning relative to these special permits? If not, Madam President, those are my items. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carney.
You, Madam President, I have items twenty-one through twenty-eight. The first item, twenty-one, is a grant application with Bloomberg for asphalt. I don't know if there's anyone that can speak to that item or answer any questions on it.
Hi, Janet Burke here, the Director of Research. I'm available if anybody has any questions.
Janet, where's the art going?
The location that has been chosen is directly in front of City Hall. Right in the street there where the deputy mayor and the mayor currently park.
Okay. So does that mean I need to move so I don't hide the art anymore?
The mayor said that we had to find you new parking spaces, good new parking spaces.
Okay.
There are more questions on that item?
Just got one quick one. Will that artwork have to go before our Public Arts Commission there, Janet, or do we just?
Yeah, there will be a question. And as I understand it, we'll be putting it on social media and having people phone the Art Commission. Kate Allwater is working with us on the application.
Okay, that puts me at ease. Thank you.
So what do we know what it's gonna look like? Or is it they have to still decide what type of artwork is it?
There is a rendering, right? Just geometric shapes. But if you award them, we will be going out for a call for artists to give us their ideas and what we should put there.
Oh, okay.
They don't like basketball, I know that, so.
And one quick question, Janet, how long is the art gonna stay there? Or is it permanent?
No, well, we are thinking a life span of at least five years. That's why when we did the geometric shapes, at first, we were thinking that that would be easy to maintain. But it became apparent that we wanted more public input, so we're going to do a call for artists. And then, excuse me, that will be one of our determining factors is how easy to maintain the pictures, the art will be.
And if I can just throw a wrinkle, when you do that, I know you're looking for artists, but there's a lot of young people within our school districts that are interested in art, and maybe we could reach out and let them be a part of this process.
Absolutely, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
All right, are there any more questions on this item?
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm trying to understand. I'm trying to get some clarity on where this art piece is going exactly. Are we putting it where they're currently parking? Is this on the sidewalk? Is this street no longer usable for this?
It will be in the street, and it will make it, it'll be more like a park. There's been discussion of putting planters at either end and making it more like a park. It'll be right on the street, right in front of City Hall.
Janet, aren't you talking between the island and the building? You're talking about the parking space between the island and the building, not the street on Washington Street?
No, right, I'm sorry, yeah, between the island and the building. I'm sorry if that was unclear.
Further questions on this item?
Well, I just think, Counselor Carney, I'm okay for accepting the money. I'm just wondering if we should have like a sort of a sketch or something to tell us exactly what's going on there.
Yeah, there's no actual vote for this without knowing what it is. We have to at least see what it is. Or at least get an idea of what we're dealing with.
I mean, I can certainly send you the right thing that we have currently, just so. But it will change, and you can certainly be part of the processes. Excuse me, do the call for artists, your input at that point, too. But I can certainly send you what we have at this point.
Not to argue with you, Jen, but I mean, I sat to a Public Arts Commission meeting the other day where everything was presented to the Public Arts Commission, including where the money was coming from and everything else. And the thing was tabled. I mean, with almost everything accounted for. So I'm a little, I don't even know if we're voting, we're voting to accept money for some sort of artwork we don't even, never even seen, so.
Right now, I'm asking, and it is to enter into an agreement, but I guess really what I need at this point is your permission to at least apply to see if we receive the award. And then if you'd like me to come back, I can change the letter and come back. Agreement if we receive it, or I can send you whatever I have, however that makes it easier for you.
Well, how about a provision that we will accept the money and will spend the money with the provision that we approve the artwork? How's that?
That, so, city clerk, would you like me to do a new letter with that?
Yeah, what you do is just say "application" and leave agreement off. Just write in your letter, you wanna make an application to Bloomberg Fund, and then when you get the money, you come back for the agreement, instead of doing it both in one step.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counselors.
Thank you. Okay, so items twenty-two and twenty-three? Someone's speaking on that?
Yes, good afternoon, counselors. Item twenty-two and twenty-three are related to the creek retaining wall project that we're currently completing design on. This is going to, we are going to construct a retaining wall along Anadaga Creek on the west side of the creek between Walton and Fayette Street. So it's directly across from the Creek Walk and the seating for the Creek Walk where the serpent is. So we need to accept a temporary easement from the parking lot across the street, which is owned by 345 West Fayette Company LLC. So twenty-two is accepting the contemporary construction easement for the construction of the wall, and twenty-three is providing forty parking spaces for those parkers that are gonna be dislocated from the parking lot and giving them parking spaces for a four-month period during construction at the Washington Street Parking Garage. And we anticipate bidding this project in the next month or so and completing construction later this summer. Summer, fall period.
Any questions on this item from colleagues? I'm gonna call those two items ready. Item four is an extension of the previous agreement for the parking lot. Is there someone that can speak to that or answer any questions from my colleagues?
Sure, Counselor Carney, this is Jen Tipton with Neighborhood and Business Development. As Counselor Carney said, this is really just a one-month extension of a previously agreed-to lease in conjunction with Syracuse Urban Renewal Agency for the eighteen parking spaces in Lot 21, which is the lot behind One Lincoln Center at South Clinton and West Washington. And the commercial tenant that had been leasing the spaces is one of our CPA firms in town, and with the extension of the tax season to May 17th, I believe, they just had requested another month for their parkers.
Any questions on that from anyone? Hearing none, I'm gonna call that ready. Next two items are in regards to road recon. Is there someone from DPW that can speak to that and answer any questions?
Yes, Counselors, Commissioner Robinson over at DPW. This is just our annual authorization and bonding for our road reconstruction plan, not to exceed four million. I can answer questions if anyone has any.
Commissioner, we went out over this beforehand in the morning. If we were able to expand your road recon program for this summer, would you be able to handle that as far as with the outside contractors and all that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We welcome more money.
Any other questions from my colleagues on this one?
And Commissioner, have you, did you guys send out all the roads you plan on doing? You have, right? I think today the mayor sent out something. Obviously, we gotta get approval from you guys before we actually start doing that.
Counselor Driscoll, it's in your package. The list is included in your package.
Okay, yeah. Oh, you're talking about the list, okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Good, yeah, just making sure we had it all. Thank you. Yep.
Commissioner, before you leave, let me ask you a question, because we've been reconning for at least ten years since I've been here. Once we do the recon, because I've noticed that we do a lot of the same roads, how long are we looking for these roads to last so that we can move in other directions?
They're typically, one of the lasts is, you know, ten to fifteen years, you know, at best. That's why we do Slurry Seal, and that's why we try to do that in every quadrant every four years to try to get the longevity out of the road.
I understand that Slurry Seal is just a Band-Aid, because that's just so you can do the recon. I'm talking about the stringent recon that we do on the roads, because point, the streets right there by City Hall and right in front on South Salina Street, those have been being recon since Stephanie Minnie was mayor. So how long are we gonna continue to roll over the same roads and not spread further into the different communities? That's what I really wanna know.
Salina, I haven't, so I know Salina is a bigger project that's not coming from DPW. I think it's an engineering project, correct, Maryam?
Yes, Salina Street is an engineering project, and there has been construction going on the past more than a year. But this mill and pave, we're trying to get everybody to do their excavations in the street so that we can do the final mill and pave this summer. Trying to follow the dig ones philosophy as much as possible.
Okay.
Are there any further questions on those items? Hearing none, I'm gonna call those two items ready. Item twenty-seven is an amendment just to crack the typo. I don't know if there are any questions on that one. I'm gonna call that one ready. Does one speak on twenty-eight, negative declaration?
Item twenty-eight is related to the same project as twenty-two and twenty-three. This is just the authorizing the negative declaration pursuant to Seeker for the construction of the retaining wall between Walton and Fayette on the west side of the creek.
Any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna call that item ready. And Madam President, those are my items. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Thank you, President Hudson. I have items twenty-nine right through to thirty-six, and I have some recreation to go through them one by one, if the council doesn't care, and we don't care. Go on, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Julie Lefebvre Parks Recreation. Item number thirty, or I'm sorry, twenty-nine is to accept funds in the amount of $35,000 from the Jim and Julie Bayham Foundation. We requested your permission to apply for this a few months ago. This is to renovate the basketball courts to include, but not, but may include more fence, new fence around the outdoor basketball courts as well as court resurfacing.
Any questions? I'd like to thank Counselor Driscoll for his persistent, as he says, persistent pestering about West Moreland Park. Number thirty?
Thirty is John Marcellus and his wife has, they have graciously reached out. They did this a year or so ago, want to donate $3,000 for us to purchase more rental ice skates to be used at any of our ice rinks.
Any questions? Go on, Commissioner.
Item number thirty-one is we would like to decrease fees on the books for Meacham Ice Rink. This is to rent out to hockey groups or anybody who wants to rent ice time, not just admission. We know that the demand goes down in the summer months, so we'd like to decrease that so that we could attract more groups. One fee specifically for April and August, and an even more reduced fee for the months of May, June, and July.
Commissioner, I'd like to thank you for the efforts you made last summer, accommodating many of the local groups during the real height of the COVID crisis and being able to like work things out with them so they were able to get the kids out, at least to skate. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Nobody wants to see kids and families doing anything more than we do, so. Next one is we'd like to introduce new fees. These are fees that did not exist before. The reason is that we are looking forward to introducing new activities in the parks this summer, and in order to do so, we need to introduce a fee. So one is sporting equipment rental. If you remember, we had luck this last winter doing pop-up events. We'd like to continue that. We are going to be purchasing boats, but we also wanted to cover other sporting equipment. So one of the fees is sporting equipment rental for pop-up equipment. Five dollars per session. You cannot rent a kayak anywhere, anywhere for five dollars per session. Our session is gonna be approximately an hour. We are purchasing a movie screen for our own purposes in the parks, but we anticipate that our community groups who work with us in the groups would want to rent this screen out as well. So we have created, we'd like to create a fee so that they can rent out the movie screen, thereby creating more events in our city. They can, we anticipate many of these will be free showings for their groups. If you were to do this through a vendor, it would be approximately $1,000. We are suggesting $150 to rent our screen with our staff to do the install, $40 an hour for staffing, and it'll only be about $30. So that is that fee. And then four, we would like to introduce a special event program fee only to be used, and I put that in here, only to be used when we have to limit the capacity, when our mass, when we have to say only 200 people can come, because that's what we're at right now, specifically for these movie nights. This, we don't want to offer a movie night, offer free registration, 200 people register for it, and five people show up, because there was, they just said, sure, I'll show up, but the city had to pay $400 for the light movie license. We put a lot of staff on overtime. So we are suggesting that we introduce a fee, again, only for when we have to limit how many people can come. Sixteen and up, three dollars a person, anybody under that one dollar a person. The Parks Department will certainly work with people. If they reserve a space ahead of time and have to cancel, we'll happily give them their one dollar back or their three dollar back. But we would like to use this fee right now. And then again, once mandates are lifted, we will no longer use this fee again.
Any questions from my colleagues on this?
Julie, would you be looking, if there were groups that would wanna sponsor kids, you know, the five-dollar fee or the three-dollar fee that you're charging, would you be looking, interested in looking at groups that sponsor blocks of kids for these things?
We are always willing to, you know, we do payment plans for other things. We absolutely, in an effort, our goal is to serve the community. So absolutely, we would be open to something like that.
That's a great question, President Hudson. It's terrific. Thank you, Commissioner.
The next one is, this is an annual budgeted item. This is to request, sorry, this is number thirty-three. Appropriate funds to pay out the $9,000 that we, this, out of my department, pays to the Syracuse Parks Conservancy to support their efforts. Especially in those last twelve months, their efforts have benefited this department in immeasurable ways. So the $9,000, I feel, is a very small price to pay to help them with their insurance for events, website development, and whatnot.
Any questions? Hearing none, thirty-four?
The next three are all agreements with the county for various things. One is to enter an agreement so that we can request our full reimbursement for our deer management program, which has now concluded. Full report on that will come later, but right now, this is just, since the program is over, we request reimbursement at 100%.
Counselor Driscoll, you've been involved in this. Do you wanna say anything?
No, just, you know, just supportive. I look forward to hearing the report, and, you know, I definitely support the full reimbursement and, you know, wanna see that move forward.
Thank you.
Number thirty-five is.
Julie, wait, wait.
Yes, yes.
So with the full report, does that mean that that's just what that pays? And then we are gonna start another one, or is it?
So we break it down by season, because we only get a permit to conduct wildlife deer management activities, typically from the month of, months of December to the end of March. This year, it was shortened just due to the pandemic. So the report you will get will be just for this past February and March. So we're, and so those are the. So we're requ- and so those will be, those will be the results you get. However, no matter, we have to pay the bills to USDA, no matter what, for the services they provided.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Counselor Majok.
Number thirty-five is, you know, we are renting out the kayaks this summer. However, um there's a twelve month back order to get any kind of recreation equipment right now in any capacity, camping equipment, anything. The county is not renting out their boats this year, so they have happily and graciously offered their boats to us for no fee for us to rent out and launch this program. So this is just to sign an agreement saying that they are loaning the boats to us. If anything happens, um you know, the city will be responsible, but there's no money involved in this contract.
Did you thank the County Parks Commissioner for that?
Absolutely.
That's great.
And the last one is a formality, just entered into agreement with uh Board of Elections. They use two of our buildings annually. So this is just to formalize the agreement for them to use uh Magnolia and Seal Center.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Those are all of our items.
Any other questions? Hudson, I'll say these are all, all these items are ready.
Thank you. Counselor Majok.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. The first item is for the uh fire department is Chief Monara.
Um hi, Counselor Majok. Um I am on um. Hello, council members. Uh this item is for the fire department to accept a uh donation up to fifty thousand dollars to receive uh three natural gas detectors. Um there's no obligation financially for the city and we're gonna uh receive training by uh National Grid. Um it will coincide with our response training to national uh to net uh natural gas emergencies. So I'm asking for permission to accept this donation.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Uh item thirty-eight, Chief Cecil.
Yep, thanks, Counselor. Uh good afternoon, Counselors. This is a, number thirty-eight is to uh request to uh apply for a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. There is no local match. It's a very unique grant opportunity that came our way. It would allow us to purchase approximately uh um ten iPads. And then we would uh partner with Liberty Resource, which is a mobile crisis unit. These these laptops, or I'm sorry, these iPads would be carried on each of the shifts, most likely by the officers that have been trained in CIT, so that when we go on a, what we're calling now a PIC, a Person in Crisis, and we arrive on the scene and uh we have the opportunity to engage the person with their caseworker through this laptop. We would charge up the laptop, and I keep saying laptop, the iPad, and we would actually FaceTime their caseworker or someone from Liberty Resources right on scene to see if they could help them uh get through the crisis they're going through. It's just one more layer uh that we're adding on to all the things we're trying to do when we arrive and respond to these mental health crises.
Any questions, Counselors? Thank you. Next item, Chief.
Sure, the next item is a waiver of the RFP and I have assured Councilman Majok that next time around, we would put this out to bid. Um it's just that we're gonna run out of time if we do it now. This is to enter into, or this is a waiver of the RFP for psychological services so that we can have a psychological analysis done on the recruits that will be entering our academy on July first. The psychologics are one of the last um phases of uh that they go through in the process before they uh are selected to enter the academy. This group has been used in the past multiple times and specifically used because they have expertise in that, in the analysis, psychological analysis of both police and public safety. In fact, the current director in two thousand fourteen was one of only five psychologists in New York State that were board certified for police and public safety psychology by the American Board of Professional Psychology. So we we are asking, uh it's for twenty thousand dollars. Each psychological analysis is three hundred and fifty dollars. Certainly, if we don't cover that, twenty thousand dollars, we will be putting it back into the general fund. But twenty thousand is about what we've used in the past.
Any questions?
Yes, sir, Counselor Majok. So Chief Cecil, I've asked this question before. When you talk about um psychological testing, it's just for the new hires coming in. How do we handle psychological testing for police that's already on the force?
Great. I do remember you asking that before, and if I hadn't answered it, I apologize. So we have obviously the Cortical Wellness App that's out there now that officers officers can access at any time. It's a wellness app. Along with that, we have uh contracted out with um a different psychological service because you wouldn't want to have the same one who's doing recruits to be the same one that's working with peer support in this cortical app. So we have psychologists on a contract that assist officers if they're going through a crisis, whether it's after an officer involved shooting or anything they're going on, going on in their life, whether it's on the job or off. If we do deem, and I think this is the question you're asking, if we find an officer uh is determined by his supervisor, him or her, to be experiencing something or or uh is out of character during his shift, we will use those psychiatrists and psychologists to do an analysis of that officer who is a current employee. And let me know if I answered that correctly.
You did, okay. And then from there, appropriate actions would be taken one way or the other, correct?
Without a doubt, yes.
Thank you.
And Chief Cecil, just I I don't know if I had I'd already asked this, but you know, what, is there, is there a procedural way where we ask officers that were involved in taking care of shooting and other things to maybe just go in for a visit or do we only rely on that on that app only?
No, we rely on a bunch of the things. The app's just one of them, Counselor. So in the case of an officer involved shooting or some other very traumatic incident, officers are going to be required to do it uh to go see a psychiatrist or psychologist. Um in the case where um as President Hudson was mentioning, say the supervisor of a particular shift who's going to know the officers very well because he's been, he or she's been supervising them, sees some, something that looks like he or she is out of character, then that supervisor is going to run that up his chain of command or her chain of command and the officer is going to be, we're going to take it from there. Depending on what it is, he or she may be required to go see uh a psychologist or psychiatrist.
Excellent, thank you. Any any further questions?
One one more, one more quick one, real quick, Chief Cecil. So do you offhand know what the percentage of officers are that use the app?
I do, uh we do. All we get is aggregate information. Obviously, it's very anonymous because if it wasn't, it wouldn't work. So um the last time I pulled data, very aggregate data, it showed approximately fourteen hundred officers have um, well, about three hundred and sixty of them have downloaded the app. Uh and about, it showed about fourteen hundred um what's called hits in the app, meaning officers have been going into the app. And that was since we rolled it out in November, but keep in mind, it wasn't fully rolled out until probably January of this year. So it's it's create, we are getting officers downloading it. Um the majority of them have, and we are, they are definitely accessing it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? That will be it for me, Madam President. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, ma'am. I have items forty through fifty-eight. Uh item forty, I believe, um Director Jake Dishaw may be on the line. He can speak about this.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, Council. Jake Dishaw, Director of Code Enforcement. Item number forty is to uh adjust some of our ordinances to reflect our periodic inspections of multiple dwelling units. Um to reflect that, to be um in regulation with New York State's requirements to perform those uh every three years. So this, under these regulations, the city's five-year inspection interval relating to certificates of compliance, which again apply to multiple dwelling units, uh three apartments are up or mixed use, commercial and residential, uh will change from five years to three years. Um and that will also include language for dormitories uh being done uh once annually, which is standard with the requirement of of New York State. Happy to answer any questions related to this.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, uh thank you. All right, and items forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three are all uh encroachments. Um I believe Yolanda should be on the line to speak about this.
I am. Good afternoon, Counselor. Yolanda Johnson, Construction Development Coordinator. Um item number forty-one, the owner is asking for permission for an already existing concrete steps that it that uh encroach four feet into the right of way at six oh one LeMoyne. And
Okay.
Uh item number forty-two, the owner at four oh one North Lowell Ave, they're asking permission for already existing still awning to encroach three feet into the right of way on North Lowell. Okay.
Uh excuse me, Counselor Allen. Um I I could we go forty-one, one, but the, I I thought this was, they were existing steps that he just never got approved to encroach upon. Is that the idea?
From my understanding, yes.
Yeah.
Can you hold on to that one for a second, Counselor Allen? The next meeting, let's hold forty-one.
Okay.
Okay, you can go ahead, Yolanda.
Okay, no problem. Um uh item number forty-three, uh the owner of um the property at five eleven, five fifteen East Fat, they're asking for permission for a concrete ramp and um an aluminum canopy that will encroach four feet into the right of way on East Fat Street. And that's all I have for today.
Uh Yolanda, I just want to clarify something. In your letter, you said in number forty-one, it's ten feet into the existing, you know, right of way. Is it ten or four? Because you said four here, but the letter says ten.
I'm sorry, which one is that? Which item?
Item forty-one.
And item forty-one, let me just double check that. Yep, it's ten feet into the right of way.
Okay, so I'll make sure we had it right. Thanks.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, any uh questions for her uh in regards to number forty-three? No? Okay, thank you, Yolanda.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to item forty-four, which is uh just an amendment. Um we're just correcting the language. Uh it read a wood house and garage, and now we're changing it to a vacant lot. And I think that was a Commissioner Clifford, correct? Is that right?
Yes, Counselor Clifford, Commissioner Clifford brought these as technical changes, the two items, uh forty-four and forty-five.
Uh yes, you described that correctly. I I didn't hear what you said. I'm having trouble hearing you. Counselor Allen, you're breaking up everybody.
Afternoon, Counselors. Um I didn't have any additional updates since the committee meeting with the exception of item number fifty-one and fifty-five. Both of those properties are vacant per the most recent records from the Division of Code Enforcement.
Madam President, do you know which uh item? Counselor Allen left the phone. She asked me to continue introducing our items because her sound is going crazy. What was that last item, Michelle?
I think the land bank items were the the last um and the last item was fifty-eight, but um I don't think that there were any additional ones um that Counselor Allen had beyond the land bank ones.
Okay, well, uh maybe she couldn't hear uh Michelle, but uh that appears to be all of our items, Madam President.
Thank you. And we have a waiver item for Counselor Panigl.
Yes, good afternoon. Uh thank you, President Hudson. Uh I am requesting a waiver to add to our agenda resolution, a resolution in support of Protecting the Right to Organize Act. It is an initiative that I'm working with alongside President Hudson. Uh this is this would increase the protection of our workers' rights to organize and bargain for higher wages, better benefits, safer working conditions, and much more. Um we respectfully ask for your support in joining us in supporting this uh resolution.
President Hudson and Counselor co-sponsor that. If you'd welcome me as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, thank you uh for sending your email alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. And before we have to adjourn, we need to adjourn to executive session. So I need a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So move.
All righty, second. All righty, I'll see you guys in executive session. Flirs. They're popping back in. And we have a one o'clock meeting, which we're going to be a little behind on. But I think we have all of the counselors back in, James.
Uh it looks like you have enough to adjourn. You have uh
All righty, I need a motion to adjourn. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
See you at the budget hearing. Have a have a good one.
You too.